Good afternoon and welcome to the pre-agenda interview for Tuesday, September 30th, 2025, for the Pittsburgh Water Board of Directors. Where a clerk please read the title of the bills. And I'm sorry, while you do that, you all can feel free to come to the table.
Bill 1808, Resolution Appointing Megan Leach as a member of the Pittsburgh Water Board of Directors with a term to expire May 1st, 2030. And Bill 1809, Resolution Appointing Jordan Fishback as a member of the Pittsburgh Water Board of Directors with a term to expire May 1st, 2030.
For the record, we are joined by Councilwoman Strasbergers. What we would like to do, if you would both be willing to interview, introduce, excuse me, introduce yourself, tell us a little bit about yourself and why you have this willingness to serve on this really critically important board.
Excellent.
Megan, you want to go first?
Sure, I'll go first. Hi, my name is Megan Leach. Professionally, I serve as the VP of Corporate Development for a company called Silmar Group. We do water sector services around the country. And I'm honored and very excited to be considered for the position as a board member for Pittsburgh Water. I think my professional background has really kind of led me to this position. I started out as an Air Force Civil Engineer Officer and spent a lot of time deploying around the world and really saw the importance and urgency and emotion around providing clean water and good water management to service members and then also to local communities, making sure that happens.
I think he's going to ask you to pull your microphone a little closer.
Oh, closer. Okay, sure. Thank you. And that led me to actually move to Pittsburgh after I got out of the Air Force and pursue my graduate degree in environmental engineering at Carnegie Mellon. Did a lot of work designing membranes, improved water desalination membrane materials while I was there. It was very fun and really enjoyed getting part of the, getting to be part of the environmental community and understanding more deeply the science behind water treatment. And then after that, I joined the public sector, did management consulting, spent a lot of time doing industrial water management and industrial water management and stewardship work with large corporations and utilities and other public sector entities. And recently exited the consulting world and am now working for Silmar and helping, helping them build their organization and improve water services around the country. I'm really excited, I think, given this professional background, I think the things I'm excited about supporting Pittsburgh Water Authority on their mission is, I think it gives me, my work gives me a lot of, my work has given me a lot of experience in operational excellence. It has given me a lot of experience in understanding how digitalization can improve operations. And I think that that is something that I know that the board and also the Pittsburgh Water Authority leadership has been focused on quite a bit recently, and I'd love to lean in on some of that. And I'm just very grateful to be considered for this. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Fishback?
All right, thanks so much. Good afternoon. My name is Jordan Fishback, and as with Megan, it's really a pleasure to be here today, and I really appreciate this opportunity. So I've lived in Pittsburgh since 2011, and I currently live in Squirrel Hill South. Professionally, right now, I serve as the Vice President of Applied Research and the Director of Planning and Policy Research at an organization called The Water Institute. The Institute is an independent nonprofit, applied research organization that's headquartered actually in Louisiana. So we develop actionable research in support of science-informed decision-making to address complex and interconnected social and environmental challenges. So our work typically supports communities in Louisiana, across the Gulf Coast, and up the eastern seaboard into the mid-Atlantic region. So I've been in a leadership position with the Institute for about four and a half years. And last year, I actually started a satellite office here in Pittsburgh for myself and several staff, so we're currently located in Oakland. Prior to coming to the Institute, though, I served as a Senior Policy Researcher and the co-director of the Water and Climate Resilience Center at the RAND Corporation. I was a researcher at RAND for over 10 years. During that time, I led a number of projects directly supporting water and climate resilience planning in the Pittsburgh region. So for example, I led the RAND team that helped support the city in developing its first resilience strategy in 2017. I did a follow-on effort of that, that looked at equity indicators for the city, and then did several additional projects particularly focused on water management, stormwater, and our combined sewer overflow issues here in the city as well. So I led actually one of the first studies looking into the potential impacts of future climate change on our region's combined sewer overflow challenge. We also developed a policy brief back in 2017 when a lot of the lead service line issues were coming up, laying out the options for Pittsburgh Water to address those challenges, many of which have now actually come to pass since that time. And we also worked directly with Pittsburgh Water on a longer-term project to model and evaluate large-scale green infrastructure intended to reduce combined sewer overflows and flooding and improve ecosystems and quality of life in the Negli Run watershed, which is the largest watershed in the city. So I still actually hold an adjunct position at RAND, and in that role, I actually serve as a co-investigator for Marissa, a NOAA Mid-Atlantic Climate Adaptation Partnership Team. I also sit on the Water Science and Technology Board in the National Academies of Science, Engineering, and Medicine. So going back, I earned my PhD in policy analysis from the RAND School of Public Policy. And I'll just say one more thing, which is I've actually been working in the sector basically my whole career. But before starting graduate school, I actually spent three years as an analyst at a company called Academy's Group. We worked with the EPA's Office of Groundwater and Drinking Water, developing regulatory guidance on drinking water, different drinking water rules, and actually I helped to conduct the drinking water and clean water infrastructure needs service. So what's near and dear to my heart is thinking about infrastructure and long-term planning. And for me, coming onto this board, I would say that I'm excited for the opportunity to help not think just about the needs today, but what our needs will be tomorrow. It's what I do professionally. We think about planning under uncertainty, and I work to develop large-scale infrastructure plans in many other places. I also do a lot of work particularly focused on flood risk, and that's something I think is, is near and dear here in Pittsburgh and something that we're seeing emerge as an issue on the stormwater side more and more frequently. So I'm really honored and grateful to be considered as a member of the Board of Pittsburgh Water and really excited also to draw on my expertise and professional background to support the city that I love. Thank you.
Thank you. With that, we'll open it up to questions from members. I'll begin with Councilwoman Strasberger.
Thank you. I'll defer to those, to other council members as I sit on the Pittsburgh Water Board. I'm happy to allow others to go first.
Thank you. Councilwoman Strasberg?
Yeah, so thank both of you for coming in today, and thank you for your willingness to serve. You know, I'm looking through your resumes, and just before I walked in here, my staff and I were kind of Googling you. You're both incredibly qualified, like, like the, maybe some of the most qualified, impressive people that, that I have seen. So thank you for, for your willingness to be on the board, and I think it, it does speak especially in PWSA, how PWSA has moved so far from, you know, political appointees and folks that were committee members to now having like, I don't know, very, very qualified experts on the board, and how far we've moved along in really a very short time there. As for, I have some questions, not even questions, just issues that I've been having with PWSA lately, that I would like to discuss with you, if that's okay. Things that maybe are not exactly within your, your purview here, but I, things that I hope that you can stay on top of as you're, you're working through. This is the first thing I want to mention. We have, PWSA set all kinds of records for how effectively they've done lead line replacements, how, how quickly and how many projects they've been able to take on. One of the neighborhoods I represent, South Side Flats, had lead line replacements this summer, really all this year. The neighbors have essentially lost all patience with PWSA, although they wanted the lead line replacements to happen. The construction has been brutal. In addition to that, there's a sewer separation project happening in South Side as well. So your street was torn up for lead lines, and now it's torn up for the sewer lines. I'm curious if you have any ideas on what you, what we could do to make life a little easier for our construction standards, for residents during these very necessary projects, but also very disruptive? I mean, they're, South Side is essentially a grid, and there are days where I'm, I'll drive through and be like, I just, I don't know how to get anywhere anymore, you know? And it's, it's not, it shouldn't be difficult. But a road's closed that, maybe there's maybe notice one out, but I certainly didn't see it, and I'm the councilperson, so probably should, should have come to me at least. So I'm curious if you have any, any comments on that.
Please go ahead. Oh, I was going to say, I do know, having gone into the public portion of the board meeting last Friday, that it has been in discussion about how to improve that, I guess, maybe the communication process, but also the repair of the roads afterward, given, given a lot of the cold patches that have to be put down or other, other types of work. So I know that, I know that the Water Authority does think quite a bit about how to make sure that despite the disruption, the roads are returned to the better quality than they were previously. I don't know much about the process for notification at this time about what, what roads will be closed, when, and then also the sequencing of different concurrent projects for not only Pittsburgh Water, but also other utilities that might be operating and closing roads as well. So I'd be really interested to figure out what that process looks like and work with you to, I need to lean forward, don't I? Would be great to learn more what that process looks like and what, what they've done to improve it, and then also what further improvements we can make.
And I'll say, having seen that happen through my neighborhood as well, I can understand the level of disruption. One thing I would add is just the idea of having the sewer separation project happening in parallel, certainly dating back to even when we were developing the resilience strategy, right? One of the goals is to do as much alignment of these types of infrastructure improvements as possible. And it seems like, again, with the, with the number of authorities that we have, the number of different agencies that will touch a road, let's say, it is still, I think, a really significant challenge, how to coordinate that in ways that best minimize the impact for residents. So I will say, generally speaking, I'm very much in favor of trying to like have that communication and alignment and tear a road up once and not four different times. And that's something I would look to prioritize as a member of the board. But, you know, having, having just come in, I think that's where my focus would be.
Awesome. Yeah, I mean, I think that's something that we've, we've talked a lot about for years, the idea of doing this utility coordination, making sure that we've got all the utilities in the room. We give them the paving list a couple of years in advance, and they can figure out what they're doing, which is something that we've never really been able to nail. But it would be, you know, in fact, in my mind, I would love to see the utilities get out of the paving business and pay us a fee to repave the streets, which is essentially, there's, you know, only, only a handful of people that actually can pave the streets anyway, but at least that way, we're coordinating, we're going to open up, you know, we're going to open up 18th Street, who's got, who's got work that they need to do in the next 10 years here, and this is your opportunity to do that work now. You know, I, I would love to see us get to that. It's still not, you know, not, not something that we've been able to do, but, you know, just, that being said, the lead lines have kind of been one thing, but the sewer separation project has been pretty, like, extra frustrating for residents. There's a woman who's big community leader in South Side, just had a small baby, and every morning, construction starts at 7:00 AM. And it's jackhammering, it's not like, you know, it's not, not light work. And then that's when I start getting a phone call from her. So, you know, things like that, it just, like, realizing that this work is important, but also that we are disrupting people's lives when we're doing this. My, my predecessor always said, you know, I forget, he had, he had a phrase that somehow has escaped me, but, you know, about long-term gain. The other thing I wanted to mention that PWSA is involved with that I think is always underappreciated, is your role in development of new construction, new housing, new even commercial spaces. And often, the PWSA requirement is a huge hurdle for us building housing of all types. And that although often we think of the role of PWSA as providing clean drinking water to, to residents, you also do play a huge function in construction and, and what we can build there. I had a project in my district that had to be entirely reconstructed or redesigned because of PWSA's requirements that were more than federal standards. So I'm curious if you could talk a little bit on how you see yourself as a partner in the, as a development agency, as someone who's very involved in the construction, you know, when private contractors come in and want to, want to build, they often have to go to PWSA for approvals.
And this, this is permitting or just like design standards for flows and pressure and all that sort of thing, like?
Yeah, like sometimes where, where lines are and how close you can build to them. There's a big disagreement between is that 20 feet or 30 feet? I think some attorneys are going to make some, some big money off that one way or another. So, but those kind of conversations that I, that I'd like to hear kind of your thoughts on how you see yourself as building. We, we know we've got a housing crisis here. PWSA has, has a role to play.
No, I mean, I'll, I'll say that, that makes a lot of sense. And that side of things in terms of the permitting and, and, and design would be newer for me. I think you have more expertise probably in that domain.
Yeah.
But I can say, I mean, I, I think that's a pretty major responsibility, having drinking water, wastewater and stormwater all together, right? And that encompasses a lot of what is actually happening on a property. Where my expertise more comes in is on the stormwater side. I know there's actually been an update to the stormwater code and those standards in terms of onsite capture for new building. And in that case, I think it's, it is, actually, this goes in line with what I was saying beforehand, which is you want to be able to prepare for the future and think about, you know, supporting additional and new development, but also at the same time recognizing we are getting more and more rainfall and bigger bursts. So the idea that there might be a standard to require greater onsite capture for the amount of water, it might cost a little bit more, but the benefits are going to, you know, actually extend to all the city in terms of the flooding that won't happen downstream as a result of that. So it's always a choice to have to make to do that, and there's going to be trade-offs no matter what. And I actually, I look forward to helping to support staff as a part of the board and making those trade-offs, and also thinking carefully about the role that the utility plays in, in future land use development.
That's good. And beyond kind of storm and sewer requirements for any new property development, you know, if there are, if there are additional standards that PWSA or Pittsburgh Water puts on, it's, it requires understanding the process for communicating those and making sure that any changes are, you know, everyone's made aware of those, those updates and the reason for them. I think that'll be something that I'd be interested to understand, just so people don't get caught off guard, you know, the design isn't complete before they recognize that there are some additional standards, so.
Yeah, thank you. I, I can, I, one of, or I guess, one of the things I've, I've been discussing, it's a project actually in Councilman Gross's district, where we have nine-inch green roof trays, not three-inch roof trays, which are standard, and the ones that are commercially available. The nine-inch trays had to be custom-built, which added a lot of cost to the, the building, which ultimately, you know, someone has to pay for. And that, that cost gets passed on to the tenants there. So, you know, I, I, you're right, exactly right, that there are trade-offs there. We do want to capture more water in that situation, of course we do, but it's no free lunches, so. All right, well, again, thank you. As I was looking through your resumes here, I'm incredibly impressed that you're willing to serve with, with us, and thank you for your, your willingness to join the board.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Ward?
Great, thanks. How are you? Yeah, thank you for, for being here and, and for offering your time to sit on the board. So I, I represent Four Mile Run. I don't know if you're familiar. Yeah, so just sort of, so flooding and stormwater management is top of mind for me. As you may know, significant funding was pulled for a Four Mile Run stormwater project. You know, eight to nine, just, you know, between eight and nine million has already been spent on design. And so I was curious, just if you have followed that, what you, so currently, and I will say since, obviously, I was very unhappy about the funding being pulled. Since then, PWSA has engaged, they've installed sensors in, to measure the impact, like, the, the impact of the M29, so that, you know, now I feel like that should have been done before the funding was pulled, to be honest, but at any rate, but now it's being done to, you know, kind of model and figure out how much the N29 has, you know, is, is helping the problem now that that is fixed, also what the potential impact of the Alka-Sand dig eventually could have, et cetera. So I am appreciative of that and, and, but at the same time, there is still a desire certainly among the community. I don't know if you're familiar with the Mon Water Project, and Annie Quinn, she's doing lots of work around, she's actually organized on October 3rd to have a bunch of elected officials come down and take a look. I, I hope that PWSA, I believe PWSA will be there for that. But, but the real question there is, you know, ideally, we would be doing these green, not just the gray infrastructure, and so what, do you have any ideas around, whether it's that project in particular or generally around the city, what, what we could be doing more of or innovative ways that we should be looking to generate funding for these massive stormwater projects?
All right, it's a, it's a big question. I'll go first on that one.
Yeah, I'll defer to you first.
Yeah, of course. So as someone who's very interested in green stormwater infrastructure in the city, I've been tracking the Four Mile Run project pretty closely from the inception. So I will say overall, I share some of the frustration, starting from the beginning of that project and the, the green infrastructure improvements, the Panther Hollow Lake improvements and everything that's sort of stepped down to what the project currently is. And I think it speaks to how challenging it is to actually, actually implement a large-scale infrastructure project anywhere, and particularly anywhere in the city. So I've tracked that very closely. And yeah, and had gotten some background and understood that they're now monitoring M29 and trying to, trying to get a sense of that. And my general understanding, coming in from outside the utility, is that having all of the capital improvements required on the drinking water side first have taken up a lot of attention and dollars, given the urgency and need, but the intention is to turn more towards stormwater improvements as a next step. And frankly, one of the reasons I, I would like to be on the board is to help usher that process along and make sure that those stormwater improvement, investments are happening. In, in the recent past, I might suggest that, you know, going after larger, trying to unlock or going after larger-scale federal support for some of these projects is a good idea. This is not the moment where maybe that's, that would happen quite as readily, but I do think that there still are opportunities out there. And the idea of marrying together different kinds of projects to meet different goals, I think, is one that I share with many of the, the folks in the region. I've spoken to Annie Quinn many times, especially when we're thinking about green infrastructure or bringing together a lot of what I've looked at, which is green infrastructure together with gray infrastructure improvements to provide that, that overall benefit, and also for residents to be able to see that benefit more than just the pipes that are under the ground. So I, I will say, overall, I'm coming onto the board, this will be top of mind, this project, and more broadly, turning attention towards those stormwater capital improvements. And I guess, from my, my background and expertise, this isn't going anywhere, right? This is something we're going to have to deal with today and tomorrow and five years from now. So these are projects that are necessary as we think about the ongoing water quality challenges, of course, but also with the expectation that even the Alka-Sand Clean Water Plan, once implemented, will not solve our flooding challenges.
Maybe only one thing to add on to that is that, you know, you think of capital improvements as one, and one major method to address stormwater issues, but there's, there's so much out there that, that can be considered to help improve or reduce the impacts of stormwater issues regarding kind of situational awareness of where it's going to happen and when, and predicting it, notification of people, and, and really making sure that the, we're deploying every tool we can, especially given the unprecedented availability of data and our ability to model it and to understand it in real time. I'd love to just understand a little bit more about, you know, how, how Pittsburgh Water is thinking about that, and then also how far, how far forward they're thinking about how, making sure that, you know, capital improvements are kind of married with this larger situational awareness and making sure people are safe, even when, even when the water is exceeding design standards, so.
I think I would add one other thing, which actually goes back to an earlier point, which is on the idea of agency and utility coordination. Because for, I think for Four Mile Run, the Four Mile Run project, this was obviously true, that permitting was a major factor, especially for the green component. And then we saw the same thing when we were thinking about kind of large-scale daylighting of Negli Run and kind of going up, is that no matter what, you're going to have to work with four or five agencies at minimum in order to make that happen. So there's the, obviously, the, the funding need there, but then there's also getting alignment on what that design will be, and then getting all the pieces to come together at just the right moment, so that all of the, the authorities that have some level of, of responsibility for an area will sign off and say, yes, that's what we want to do as well. So that's something that I think is a perpetual challenge, and obviously Pittsburgh Water is one amongst those, but it's one that I would actually want to prioritize and think about better ways to both communicate, co-design, and then work together through transparency to build towards those bigger capital improvements.
Yeah, I think with that project, one thing that is still sort of a question mark for the community and maybe also is, is, you know, are those design, is that design the design that we should do that is basically 90% done, and it's really just a question of doing it, right? Daylighting that stream, doing the, you know, the, the fix on the, on Panther Hollow Lake? Or, or maybe it's and, and are there other fixes that need to happen before that pinch point of the run, right? Like, are there things that need to happen elsewhere so that all that water isn't, isn't hitting the run from all the neighborhoods around it? So, anyway, well, I, it is heartening to know that you are familiar and have looked closely at the issue, because it's certainly for my district, a critical one. Another topic that I've brought up a number of times and sort of have, and I, I want to bring it up again, is the issue of evictions due to unpaid water bills. I, so as you may be aware, unlike, you know, your gas bill or your electric bill, your water bill, the water bill stays with the property, right? And so what we, you know, we're spending millions of dollars in, in the city on affordable housing, you know, having lots of debates around, you know, making sure that people can stay in their homes. And we are seeing though, because, because that water bill stays with the landlord, and PWSA does have a lot of good programs, right, for renters, but the water bill has to be in the renter's name in order for the owner to take advantage of. I think, I think maybe the, the landlord can take advantage, a little, maybe a couple extra steps, can take advantage of programs for their renters. But nonetheless, at the end of the day, if the water bill isn't getting paid, the landlord doesn't have recourse, so to speak, and they know that, and so what is happening is that landlords are getting frustrated. And either that or they're, they are just putting the water bill in their own name and then, you know, not, then, then the tenant is losing out on advantages. So I, I don't know if you have any thoughts on that, I just wanted to raise it as an issue.
I, not this time, but it's an interesting issue that I'm happy to look into, yeah.
I mean, I, I would like to see it that, you know, it's your, your water, but like, you know, if I leave, you know, and I leave an apartment, like, okay, the water bill goes with me, just like the gas, but now that is an issue when I move into a new place, okay, now I got to get the water turned on, right? So the bill be, but, but it, but it isn't the thing that has my landlord saying, you got to get out. I don't care that you're paying your rent, I've got this unpaid water bill, and I keep getting notifications from PWSA, and this bill's getting bigger and bigger, so. And I keep getting notifications from PWSA, and this bill's getting bigger and bigger, so.
Right.
At any rate, the other question, and I guess I'll get your thoughts on this. So, you know, we have this pending transfer of our, of our water system, right? Like, the drinking water and sewer infrastructure to PWSA. And this is a conversation I had with Will Pickering as well. So, we have a number of private, of quote-unquote, private sewer lines throughout Pittsburgh. And often, we, it seems like maybe we don't always know where those lines are, but what, what ends up happening, or what, sorry, I shouldn't say what ends up, but what has happened in my district in particular. And I know that I've seen in other districts, like giant hole, you know, those, those wa, those sewer lines going un-maintained, and then all of a sudden, you have a giant hole in the street, and property owners are just like, my god, like, what, you know, what do I do? And, you know, giant, I mean, just huge bills. I, I think I heard one story in the East End of someone actually having to sell their house, just being like, I can't, I can't pay for this, like, I can't do this. So, I had a situation, when I very first took office in Squirrel Hill, where there was a private sewer line that was just degraded, and you were actually getting sewage, like, coming up, like, and, and seeping into other buildings that were not on that line, et cetera. And apparently, it was a problem that had been going on for years. And PWSA actually did the right thing, right? They built a new line on Forbes Avenue, but because they didn't own, right, this, this like, sort of quote-unquote, private line in this alley, they weren't able to compel the property owners to tap into the new line, right? And it just took lots of wrangling, and, and, you know, ultimately, it was the Health Department that, that turned the water off, right? I mean, that was, I mean, it took a very long time, but ultimately, the, the county turned the water off, and they had to make the change. But that seemed to me like an issue that could have been solved if PWSA just owned the line, just took ownership of that so-called private line, right? They could have said, and again, this is just one situation, right? But they could have said, years ago, right, back when the problem first started happening, and they put in the new line on Forbes, they could have said, sorry, we own that line, that, that private line, and we're shutting it up, like, you, you know, you can't use it. It's ours, you have to tap into the new line that we built. So, I don't know if you have any thoughts about this pri, you know, issue of private sewer laterals that are, that are causing problems that end up being far greater than, than I think maybe they need to be.
And, and are you thinking, in the, in the instance of the asset transfer, thinking of this as an opportunity to, you know, make, make a statement about private sewer lines or some sort of, like, set a new precedent for those?
I mean, it's something, it's, it's, it's a tricky ques, because I understand that Pitta says, like, well, that would be so much more, right, that could be, you know, in, in, in having to maintain those sewer lines, but they're not getting maintained. And then when they do ultimately collapse, or whatever happens to them, the damage is so much greater than if we just proactively said, yeah, these are ours, we're gonna go in, we're gonna figure out where they are, and what they, you know what I mean? And, and get people on the road at least to, go ahead, yeah.
No, I, I can't speak to the legality of that, but I do, like, what, where my head goes is actually just thinking about what's currently happening in terms of the lead service line replacement, right? Where there, there's, the utility is not claiming ownership of the private side, but I really have been impressed, tracking this issue over the last decade, about the system that has been used to ensure that both the public and private side were replaced and replaced at the same time. This was a big concern, I think, back when we, when we did that study in 2017, about, well, it actually could increase lead, lead levels if you were only to replace the public side of the line and the private lateral that was, was lead, because it would disturb it. And then that actually could increase lead levels in the house. But since then, I, I've been really impressed with how Pittsburgh Water has come up with a system. And I, as a, as a homeowner, I got the, I got all the documents that went along with that in terms of the, the, the need for consent to do that, but a system, a systematized process to identify where that needs to happen, and then proactively going out and making those replacements. And essentially, the utility coming in to help support and actually do the work on the private side, even if they're not claiming ownership. So, I'm not saying that is exactly the same case, or that it would work the same way, but I think that it's something maybe to draw from in, in thinking about how to solve this. And particularly, Megan had mentioned, the, the use of data. Obviously, knowing better where these are located, and where there might be really old terracotta sewer lines out there, would go a long way towards proactively identifying these issues before they become sinkholes.
Right, and maybe, maybe one more thing is just understanding the economic argument for Pittsburgh Water specifically, you know, you have, it's a classic, the preventative maintenance is always less than the emergency, you know, repair. So, what are, what are the costs to Pittsburgh Water of emergency repairs right now to this, for this specific problem? And, and can you use that cash, or that, that money instead to target, to, you know, target preventative maintenance or, or some other program? Because that, that would have to be spent anyway, in, in the current way things are working, right?
Yeah, and I, I should mention that, I think, coming soon, I don't know if it's live or coming soon, as the councilwoman would know, but is an insur, like, a low-cost insurance option? It's not that high, I ca, you know, I mean, the, the problems can be far more expensive than I think the coverage available, but that's just something to, to know. But at any rate, I, I do think, I mean, in that one case in Squirrel Hill, it would have been clearly, you know, the problem would have, we would not have had sewage seeping up and running into buildings that weren't even on the line, right, to, if, if PWSA had simply been able to say, yep, that's ours. You know, you, you cannot tap, like, we, you know, you have to tap into this other line. We're not gonna let you use our old, broken line, it's no longer good. Anyway, okay, another point, just, just, you know, to know, is that, is, you know, engagement with, is PW, or, sorry, Pittsburgh Waters engagement with, just with our water advocates around? I think that it's, it seems like it has gotten better, but, you know, I, I think that that would be, I don't know, just something to look at, because we really do, I mean, as, you know, as you have done in, in your own lives, like, advocacy around water, there's just lots of good work being done, and really lots of earnest, and what seems to me, you know, smart ideas coming from, from the water, whether it be on the, you know, the sort of, you know, dealing with our watersheds as, as ecological assets, and, you know, or, or, or dealing with water from the kind of, you know, societal resident standpoint.
Yeah, no, that's a, it's a great point, and I've, in, and in a professional capacity, but then also, just out of my curiosity and as a resident, have participated in some of those, of those watershed meetings. So like, when we were doing work in Negli Run, and actually I continue on as well, the Negli Run Watershed Organization, which is now, I know, kind of coming together with some of the other watersheds to create a sort of super organization. But it was, it's incredibly helpful to have open communication and dialogue with all of the stakeholders. And so what was nice about those Negli Run watershed meetings, and as it continues, is that you had advocates, residents, representatives from all of the relevant agencies, and then experts all coming together around the same table, and presenting work that was not already, already completed, just to sort of check a box and say, we did it, but to actually get meaningful input on those as well. So, this is something that I do regularly in my professional life, that's actually bringing data and modeling into those kinds of conversations, and actually getting residents, stakeholder voices into these kinds of projects. It's a big point of focus for my professional work. I, I'm, I'm, I think it makes a lot of sense, I've seen it work and be successful here, and would wanna continue to support that as a board member.
Nothing to add there, that's correct.
Yeah, no, I, I, and, and I'm glad to hear that, because I, I think, you know, whether it's, in, in my personal experience, just with like, you know, transit advocacy, or bike pet, or whatever, when you have a, a working relationship, the combative relationship with government is, is, you know, it's, it's very slow-going when you're fighting for something. But when you are actually, you know, working together with the government agency, you get, you can get a surprising amount of stuff done. I think that we've seen that in other areas, so, you know, housing, transit, and, and I think water as well, so. And then just the last one, this is just one small, is just something to think about, and, and it could be an issue on our side too, is PWSA response to 311 calls to the city. I, I think that seems to be lacking sometimes. Now, I wanna say Rachel Rampah is fantastic, right? So when the, so she's our liaison. So, once it gets up to the council office, right, and, and I, and, you know, I send an email or my staff sends an email, it gets, it gets taken care of quickly, and that's, you know, that's great, very appreciated, and she's fantastic. But it seems like there's something sometimes going on between the call that goes into the city's 311, and it then getting over to PWSA. And I don't know where that is happening, maybe other members have more insight into that, I don't. But, but it's something to, to look into, I would say.
Yeah, that's interesting, I've actually experienced that. You see water running down the street, and you're like, okay, I gotta call somebody, there's a, there's a break, and nobody's there yet, and who do I call? And I have tried 311, but it, it didn't seem like that, that was the, the best direct way. Calling the customer service at PWSA was very effective, right? They, they took the, they took the cross street and, you know, said, okay, we haven't had this reported before, and we'll let them know, and, and it felt like it was the right place, but not everybody knows to call, like, to look up PW, like, Pittsburgh Waters, uh, customer service line, right? So, how do we make that more smooth and easier for folks?
Yeah, 'cause I mean, 311 is the go-to, and I think we want 311, at least from the city perspective. We want people to call 311, that's easy for us and our records to, you know, so.
Right, right, that's right, so everybody, so it's a central source of information on, on that, yeah.
Anyway, that's it, thank you so much, I was, this was very helpful.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Gross.
Thank you both for being here. Mr. Fishback, good to see you again, I'm looking at my notes, I'm trying to remember how far back we go. I, you know, I'm, I'm literally looking back at notes, because, you know, I was appointed to the PWSA Board in, like, May of 2014, I think, I might have been, my first meeting. And so I had to live through those dark days of trying to create those strategies. We worked together on stormwater, and certainly it was helpful to have Rand involved with the, the lead water issues. I, I, I will just reiterate what other members have pointed out, that you all, you each have very, very deep expert knowledge. And a little bit what I'm seeing is a kind of both water and sewer, but more sewer for Mr. Fishback and more water for Ms. Leach, yes?
I think that's right, that's accurate, yeah.
Okay, good, okay, just like, make sure I'm, like, reading your resumes correctly here. I, I, you know, I've also worked, was living through the stormwater and green infrastructure plans when I served on the Board, again, I can't remember what year it was, 2014 to 2019 or so. And then various other issues, that, one of which has not come up, but I think is relevant, when we're struggling with this, these big concepts of how to provide better service to constituents, but isn't just better service. It is also that, you know, our city residents shouldn't pay for each linear foot of infrastructure three different times, right? When that street is dug up three different times for your water, then your sewer, and then your, you know, gas line, which does also help, right, we haven't mentioned that, that you've paid for that street three times. And maybe that street hadn't been built, or had been collapsing for, or, not built, but repaved, or had been collapsing for some fifty years without anyone touching it. And then you have to sit there and watch it get, you know, excavated, repaved, finally. That might take a year, and then it's beautiful, and then someone comes in and digs it up again in short order. And, you know, that's happened on major streets, primary streets, Penn Avenue, between Bloomfield and Garfield right now. I bought my house in Bloomfield in twenty, in two thousand, my first house. And the city didn't have the match money for PennDOT to do the Phase One of Penn Avenue. And so we had blighted storefronts, because nobody would invest in any one of those things, because one of these days, this, you know, PennDOT was gonna come and dig up Penn Avenue. And so that went on for some twelve, thirteen years, because the city didn't have two million dollars in its capital budget. Our capital budget right now is a hundred million dollars. But under Act 47, we didn't even have two million dollars, which was the match. It took twelve mi, twelve years to come up with two million dollars. And then the first phase happened, and then concrete street went in. Concrete street that should, should have stayed beautiful for fifty years. And Pitta says immediately came and dug it up, because we entered the lead line crisis, right? And so, I mean, it literally only lasted like, two years. And, and so then we got it back down, and if you drive it right now, you know it's a mess, because people's gas hasn't torn up. Concrete street that should have been there, it took twelve years to get it there, and we've already torn it back up twice. And so it's got, the utility cuts all through it, it's a mess, people have gone to the emergency room on it, the, the, the mess that it is. So, we can't afford to do that for a thousand linear miles of water line. Linear, yes, right? And fifteen hundred linear miles of sewer line? Am I saying that act, I'm saying that right? We can't, that, that is just not something that we can pay for. And so, you know, the lines that should have been replaced in nineteen eighty don't get replaced until 2020. Forty years past their lifespan, right? So, my house was built in nineteen ten. Those pipes are supposed to last about seventy years. FYI, everybody, pipes only last about seventy years. And they didn't get replaced until twenty twenty-ish. So, you know, we had a year of what, six hundred, nine hundred water main breaks? I can't remember that, it was a horrible, terrible year, it was a terrible year. And that is a stupid and expensive way to rebuild water line, right? So, we need to, it's, it's really dire. It's not like because of, you know, one city block or this city block, or specific cases. It is really a dire situation, like, this is, we, we will go ba, all go bankrupt doing it this way. So let's not do that. But on the other hand, also, one of the things I learned in those days was that, at this table, we had a post-agenda in May of 2015, where we brought in the leadership of PWSA to yell at them, because thousands of residents were getting inaccurate bills. And some of them were forced to pay them, right? You know, a thousand more dollars that they didn't believe they owed. And they were right, but they still ended up having to pay the bills. This is going backways before PUC, all that kind of stuff. But the real takeaway, I think, is that council members had the authority to do that, because Pitta Busa is the less E, and we are the less O. I think I'm saying that legally correctly, we're the landlord for the water system, and you're just on a lease. And so we were able to make you fix things. And so I'm really concerned about this proposal that you become the owner. Because in our experience, I think, over and over and over again at City Council, we, we're having, we, we've had the, to use our power to hold PWSA and other authorities accountable. Because that's just structurally the way it is. Authorities are just less accountable to the citizens. You know, they can't unelect you, right? Should you be, should your nominations be approved by the City Council? Residents don't get to vote on your name on a ballot. And so, they, they can't remove you either. And, and kind of the same is followed through. So when we had that post-agenda ten years ago here, and yelled at PWSA for their inaccurate water meters, they just sat here and lied. for their inaccurate water meters, they just sat here and lied, right? It was Veolia, the biggest water corporation on the planet, who PWSA had interned subleased out management of the authority to a private corporation. The same corporation that was, as we were sitting here, was destroying the Flint Water System and poisoning people with lead and destroying the PWSA Water System and poisoning people with lead, which we rapidly figured out. And so, that snowballed into the kind of awareness that we were, in fact, in exceedance in lead and that people's water coming out of their taps had very high lead content. And again, this council acted. First, there was a lawsuit in May 2015 that was a citizen class action lawsuit about the catastrophic failure of the water meters that had been installed in 2013. But by December 2015, we voted to terminate the contract with Veolia and then embarked on suing them. And I don't know that that would have happened without the post agenda that happened at this table. Because council members, wasn't even me, but I was there. I think it was Councilwoman Harris or maybe Councilwoman Smith who called the post agenda because they were getting calls from their constituents, calls and emails. And then, I think, Mr. Fishback, you gave the example of like, well, the lead service line replacement is a really good example. We are going onto private property and socializing the costs, right? Taking that cost on as the public. But it wasn't PWSA that did it. It was this council that did it with the Perdido administration. First, as a board member, I did vote to halt the court-ordered partial replacements we'd been ordered to do by the courts because that was damaging to people and their health, right? If you replace half a lead line that's 100 years old, especially that's falling apart, you're going to cause it to shed more lead into the water line or even doing the construction on the street, frankly. But we were legally not allowed to cross onto private property. And it was this council that worked. We passed resolutions in support of state amendments that were being forwarded by Senator Fontana. This council and the mayor called for, I had a press conference in February 2017 to call for water filters and lead line replacements. I always like to give a shout out to our now Justice, Judge Chelsa Wagner, who was previously County Controller Chelsa Wagner, who came here and testified at public comment calling for total lead line replacements in, again, early 2017. We bought and distributed water filters. I think we started with 10,000 in May of 2017. And I'm still scrolling through this kind of timeline that we have. We finally passed legislation in July of 2017 that had been introduced by Mayor Perdido's office for, to using our authority as a municipality, which is policing authority. I don't believe authorities have policing authority. If you have a police department, you have policing authority. That's a kind of good question for the Municipal and Authorities Act and state law. But that's the jurisdiction that we exercised because policing authority is to protect public health. Then I think that's what extended that authority because, again, we own the water system, extended that authority. So, that PWSA was able to do the complete line replacements, which has been a phenomenal success. And kudos to everybody at the authority for raising the money, keeping up the work. I think even before I left, we had added some of the skill sets in-house. At one point, we had something like three teams of three different subcontractors going around the city, and we were able to do one of the teams with in-house employees. So, it's ongoing work. My point is that I have grave concerns over giving up the ownership of the infrastructure. And I think the PWSA board has already voted, so you won't have a vote, perhaps. But I'm not sure how I can vote on handing over a $2 billion asset for $1, especially when it abdicates some of, I think, the powers that would protect the public. I'll invite you to respond. I don't expect you to be, to have thought of everything I just said. I've had 10 years to think about this, but feel free.
I actually have a, because I haven't had 10 years to think about it, but I see your, hear your point clearly. What, are there other kind of mechanisms that are on your mind as City Council that are alternatives, if the assets are transferred, to retain that, you know, ability to take action in those instances that you described? What are, are there other kind of, either agreements or other regulations or such that would replace that ownership in the instance that it's transferred?
No.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, thank you. I mean, that's the, otherwise you would have brought it up.
Yeah. It's why I have grave concerns. So, you know, anyone out there, feel free to correct me, contact me, and tell me otherwise. But this is, this is my concern. Mr. Fishback, any thoughts?
I mean, there, obviously, there's a lot there, and there's a long history to this. And as you noted, we are coming in new to the board, having already most of this played out, at least on the Pittsburgh Water side. And obviously, your vote and what's gonna come before council is gonna be your choice to make in terms of what seems best from your perspective for the city. I do know that, again, that it's certainly having that level of oversight can be helpful to address challenges, but also mentioning trade-offs, right? Can also introduce other things and other challenges. And I'm sure, and, you know, as we get better informed on this from staff, there are a number of arguments to be made in terms of what ownership of the infrastructure would be in terms of the benefit side. I will say that looking at the Pittsburgh Water as a whole and seeing the evolution of the utility in and of itself from that mid-2015 time period to present, I've been really impressed and grateful as a resident to the many changes that have been made that have been positive and that, I would say, relates to governance, that relates to infrastructure, that relates to operations, and then also transparency. So, it takes a lot for a utility to be run well, I think, and there are many ways for it to go wrong. And, you know, you certainly described certain avenues and ways in which the utility in the past had fallen short and what council needed to do to respond to that. And I do think that overall, I would be coming in as a board member, thinking about holistically, how do we make sure that this utility meets its mission and serves all of its residents as best it can? And that is not something that you need necessarily to have, like, your elected officials having direct oversight to be able to do. That should be the mission of the organization, and all of the staff should be dedicated to that mission. So, I think, again, I would take it and say, you know, within what our responsibilities would be, I would want to make sure that we never got to that point again within the utility.
I appreciate that. But long after you're gone, you know, there's nothing to prevent, I think, another board from privatizing the operations again. And I say the operations, right? Because as we learned, Councilwoman Strasburger chaired a post agenda on privatization. We had, I think, a gentleman from a thing called In the Public Trust, whose the name's escaping me, who wrote a book called Privatization of Everything since then. But DBFOM is what the mnemonic I remember. So, Design, Build, Operate, Finance, Maintain, right? And when you get down, the lower down you get into a contract, a leasing contract. If you get down to the operations and maintain lease, which is what the Veolia contract was at PWSA, you're de facto privatized. So, the privatization of operations was the critical error. And what I'm concerned for myself and my own vote is that, to me, I think all authorities are already partial privatization, right? We were already at one arm's length from the public table and the public body here. Some people would argue, and it's not just an academic argument, however, right? Because there's less direct representation. There's certainly less attention in the public eye, in the media, et cetera. So, that's my, again, how much I've learned over the years, right? We mostly moved assets in bankruptcy before I was here, before any of us were here at these seats. The operations and assets of lots of city functions were moved off into authorities so that there was more borrowing power, just like corporations off-booked assets. And that doesn't mean that's good policy or good governance. So, that's the existential plight we find ourselves in now and what I'm struggling with. I will go back a little bit to the specifics that we will be faced with, especially if this transfer happens, but even if it does not. We have a, we have gaps in our mutual understanding of where the assets are and what the ownership structures of the assets are and what the citizens know and don't know. 10 years ago, we didn't have even a map to quibble with. And now, at least there is a map. Honestly, that was the first thing we learned as board members was that we didn't know where any of our pipes were. We didn't know where our sewer lines were. We didn't know where our water mains were. We didn't know. And a lot of times, people building buildings had to come over here. I'm pointing, I can see myself on screen pointing, to our vault of legislation that goes back 200 years. So, look through original maps. So, that's gotten a little better. But I don't believe that that map is perfect, since I am older than the map. And so, I think there are a lot of gaps, not only where there are private sewers, but where there are sewers we don't know about. Not only where they're claiming even water mains are private, water mains, but water lines we don't know about, let alone the ownership is disputed. I have at least once, I think twice, had sinkholes in my district and had PWSA say, that's not ours. And then we proved it did, it was. And they fixed it by going, I'm not kidding you, through that damn vault. And saying, you know, hey, I'm sorry, but this street was here and that water line was here when we, when you guys signed that lease in 1995, making you a paper shell company so that you could borrow $100 million before you ever had one penny of revenue. Because that was the original function. The water department was still the water department. All employees were here, and there was a paper shell company that borrowed $100 million. And that was the origin of PWSA. And that's where that lease is, that says we should give it to you for a dollar. It's nothing more than that. So, but secondly, so in those cases, I think that Councilwoman Work was talking about, it's where there's public street on top, but PWSA claims that the sewer underneath is private. Again, questionable. Maybe they shouldn't be private, right? And so, where are they all, and how much would it cost to just take ownership? Because the inverse is also true. And that is uncomfortable. And I think it should be uncomfortable for everybody that there are private streets that PWSA has taken ownership of the infrastructure under them and covering those costs, namely, one very large privately owned site in the Strip District from a very large, deep-pocketed developer. Why, why is PWSA committed to owning that sewer and repairing it? But not the one in front of, literally, I have, like, tiny alley houses that the people are living on Social Security, and PWSA is trying to bill them for sewer repair. Luckily, magistrate threw that one out. And so, PWSA is now going to fix that sewer as well. So, that's the second instance. And so, we need to know these things, right? We need to know where and have a kind of common public view of where these cases are so that we have better policies on addressing them that are more fair. So, there's that kind of claimed map, which is known. And then there are places where, you know, we've, the lawyers have said, well, we've worked out whether city's gonna keep ownership of, you know, pipes, let's say, in the middle of Schindly Park or Highland Park proper, where it's clearly city property. But then we have areas where it's public property above. Why are you claiming it's private infrastructure underneath? And then we have areas where it's, well, it's a private street above. So, why, you know, we have claimed to public infrastructure underneath. But I think we also need to figure out on this map before any ownership even is considered. Is, in the lead line replacements especially, I'm concerned that those laterals weren't replaced where there was either no one in residence or it was hard to contact the owner. So, I think we have dead-end properties that are still privately owned, but are tax delinquent. And sometimes, these are the kind of properties that are hard for us to address in terms of maintenance and their blights in the neighborhood because we know that we needed, like, the ownership signature in order to go onto the private property to do those lead line replacements. And then I'm also concerned about all of the ones that were, like, city property, of which there are 10,000 kind of residential parcels that are treasure sale parcels. Did we replace those lead line runners when we tore up those streets and went through and got all the other homeowners' signatures? Most of them are not in my district. But I do still think it's a system concern that we should all be talking about. And then we, I think we have still a lot of work to do on catch basins and maintenance, which is a whole separate issue, but not, it's so intimately related to all of the green infrastructure and sewer shed, especially if you're one of, in one of the priority sewer sheds, like the M29, like the A22, like the A42, like the A41. These are, you know, 80% of our combined sewer overflow and just what, 10 or so watersheds, sewer sheds. And I'm telling you, like, I represent several of them. And it's, you know, we know that we have a lot of heavy machinery that's in the shop. And I think we need, like, a Citizens Brigade to go out and clear those catch basins. I'm working on it in parts of Highland Park because it's just, I mean, the leaves are like a foot deep. So, that's something that is not, that's really critical that we're not doing. We've spent a lot of money on replacing the sewer catch basins, like, millions and millions and millions. And so, they're flush with the street because they were supposed to be, like, more structurally stable than the ones that used to be, like, cut into the curbs. And, but then they're completely covered and not getting cleared at all. So, that's a whole other issue. So, those were, those were a bunch of thoughts. And I'm sure, Mr. Fishback, you've probably thought about some of the things with the, with, the way you've spoken before, and I've heard you speak, but I haven't, it's been a while, about the combination of gray and green. And I think we should catch up offline to talk about paths run specifically because I have a bunch of citizens who are mobilized around those improvements. But before I keep you any longer, it's not water quality, but it still is integral that the Elka Sand Big Dig, being the gray infrastructure that's coming. I feel like I shouldn't let you go before I ask you if you have any thoughts there because I have, I have very specific thoughts about parts of my district, but you will have thoughts about this, how it impacts the entire system.
Okay. Well, obviously, that was.
Okay. Well, obviously, that was, there's a lot there.
There's a lot there.
Took a lot of notes, um, and there are many things there, I think, to bring back, um, uh, you know, both to the board and to staff with questions. And I will say, one piece of that, just to pull out, is that I do, like, I am in favor of more and more transparent data being the, the baseline for everything. So I think having a map that is visible, accessible, and getting the best quality data out to everyone as possible in terms of where lines are and who owns them, um, should be a priority. Um, and that's something that, um, I certainly think a big step forward on the, on the lead line replacement was actually developing that map, right? And on having some way of understanding where are the likely lead lines.
I'd like to give the citizens in Lawrenceville who spent four hours of their evening talking to our interim executive director at P W S A and recorded it and livestreamed it on Facebook. Um, Ashley, I'm thinking about you, holding your phone up for the entire four hours and calling for a map, because we didn't have one. Um, and I think the response, even in the, in the four-hour community meeting was like, "Well, well, we're not sure if we're allowed to do that. We'll find out." But it was really so important and continues to be um, to have an online map. In case you didn't know it, you can go to PGH2O and click on Find Somewhere It's Moved, the map of what material your water lateral is made of, both on the public and private side. Thank you.
Right. So I think that's a good example. Um, and yeah, again, many, many things to bring back. Um, specifically on the, on the, um, on the Clean Water Plan and what's, what is coming in and getting started from the Alka-San side. Um, there's a lot of, there's a lot that could be discussed there, and I think I would love to connect offline and catch up on that as well. Um, one thing I'll say is just directly coming out of our research is um, a recognition that the, you know, the system as designed within the Clean Water Plan is not intended to fully address the combined sewer overflow problem, even how it was defined circa twenty years ago, right, when this, when this process started and what the actual uh, rainfall levels and the volume capture that was required um, from that, I think it's still the two thousand and three typical year. Um, right. And so what we learned from additional research is, okay, well, the last couple of decades really haven't looked anything like that, and we are seeing a general uptick um, in the overall precipitation annual, if you, if you average it over time. Um, but then also what is experienced here and in so many other places in the country, which is bigger cloud burst events, major events where you're gonna have a serious, um, you know, both serious risk of flooding, but then not, those are also the events where you have millions and millions of gallons of overflow happening at once. Um, and um, the system just simply won't be designed to that level because of a number of different reasons. And so in some ways, the way I think about it is like a down payment. It is a very expensive, the largest infrastructure project, um, I think in the city's history, as I understand it. Um, and, um, and yet, a- at the end of that, there will still be more work to do, um, both on sewer overflows from, from my perspective, that they, we, we know that they will not disappear, they will hopefully be reduced. Um, but then also, we have no idea yet what that's going to do in terms of flooding and whether having these deep tunnel storage um, areas is going to mitigate some flooding in areas like the Run. Um, or if there are some areas that will benefit and others, particularly those that are more upstream, that are gonna be these concentrated areas that are just, don't have a solution on the flooding side, that will need a, a bunch of additional investment. So, um, it's happening, um, and, um, and I do think, um, you know, a lot of work has gone towards improving on this, on this particular challenge. Um, but I see that we're gonna have more work to do, even at the end of this project.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm. Yeah, and it's, I mean, it's budgeted at three billion. And it is spread out over eighty-six municipalities. The price tag, right? So it's a total Alka-San system-wide infrastructure, because it's also doubling the capacity of the Alka-San facility as well, yes. But the big digs are all in the city, probably as far as I know. So, and when I say big dig, I mean that the tunnel boring machine will be digging under the rivers a hundred feet deep. And each one of the drop shafts where there's now like sanitary overflow, uh, those main points are going a hundred and fifty feet straight down. And the leave behind will be a manhole cover that's thirty feet in diameter. So, where, you know, people in my district near those dig sites have a lot of concerns. Um, and those are places where flooding has killed people. Um, so we want solutions to make people safer, um, but also the projects itself, which again, is not gonna alleviate a hundred percent of the problem, uh, are its own, are its own source of concern. So, anyway, all right. So, um, I've taken, I think, my own share of time here, but I am, thank you for helping me to get those thoughts out on the record and put them into your heads to share the burden. Um, that's, that's what you're there for. So I appreciate your willingness um, to, to help solve these problems for us in the future.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair. I think that'll do it for me.
Thank you. Did you have anything? Okay, um, I was very exhaustive, so. I do have one question, though, um, because we've talked a lot about infrastructure work. How do we manage both the need to invest in capital, to invest in our infrastructure, as well as managing, which ultimately results in rate increases, while also managing water affordability for residents?
Um, well, in, in preparing to join the board, I think one thing um, that I've noted is just um, the level of effort and investment put into the rate affordability program. So I would just note that. Um, and as I learn more, I wanna better understand how that's actually being implemented and how that's working um, on the resident side. But I certainly think that the point of focus on an affordability program and having that be as generous as possible is one way to mitigate and offset some of those concerns. And also, thinking about the disparate impact on different residents in terms of what all of these rate increases and uh, the, the, the capital improvements that those are required for. Um, that, um, I, I think it's important to think a lot and very carefully about, um, yeah, who bears that burden? Um, and to the extent that the utility can help to allay those costs and make sure that, um, that we are making the investments that are needed, um, but they are not falling disproportionately on residents that can't afford them, um, is, is paramount. So, um, I actually wanna dig further into that program and something I wanna learn about kind of first and foremost when we join the board.
And maybe on, on my end, I think, um, you know, one way you manage affordability is obviously um, trying to optimize as much as po- as possible your operating costs. And we just discussed today already instances where there were additional operating costs because uh, people who are, you know, Pittsburgh Water was uh, operating in the same location twice uh, in rapid succession. Now, that's a capital expenditure, but it's also an operating expenditure, if you think about the, the, um, the manpower and the, and the project management and everything that goes behind, behind all of that. Um, and, uh, and I know that, um, Will Pickering and, and his team have a lot of uh, expertise on how to um, you know, streamline operations, improve operations. I do think that there's a lot of opportunity to, uh, to, for me, anyway, to take a look at, at the work that they've done so far, um, and try to understand, you know, where, where have they improved on operating costs uh, so that that rate, that rate can stay as low as possible? Um, and, uh, and where, what room do they think they have to go, um, if they make targeted investments to um, improve situational awareness, um, improve procurement processes, all these things that you can do to, to try to, try to keep things affordable?
Thank you. Um, one, one, uh, when Councilman Charlin was asking you about development and the role that you play in development, one thing that I, made me also think of was all your tap-in fees. Um, some years ago, that's how you did that structure, excuse me, changed. And frequently now, local CDCs, um, housing developers will say, "Hey, these tap-in fees are absorbing it." And like, this is a huge cost now that we're having to bear that previously wasn't really there or previously, there was some way you could prorate it somehow. Um, but you can, you can no longer do that, and you just have the sort of strict, "Here's the fee." Um, so that's also something to consider and look at as we're trying to do more affordable housing, we're trying to do these things, but then it's making it harder for some of the smaller developers to really be able to do development. So that's just something else we can consider. And then lastly, for me, I don't know if there's any way to proactively do this, so I'm just asking. Obviously, we have a lot of old infrastructure. Obviously, despite our drought in August, we're receiving more rain than ever in our city and on, onto our hillsides. And it's my understanding, although it's, at times, it's hard to always prove it, that some of the moving of our land that is occurring is occurring because there are old leaks within the P W S A system. Um, and which, to Councilwoman Cross's point about sort of governance, which ends up in a sort of a weird legal contestant, being contested between the city and P W S A in terms of what caused a landslide. Is there, with, I, again, I don't know th- if this is even possible. In the modern world and technology that we have, is there a way to look at your system and say, "We believe this area may be problematic to either develop, may be subject to potential landslides because of the age of the infrastructure under there, because we know we've had reported leaks here or there, that we should be proactively figuring out how to address this before it just all comes crumbling down?" If that makes sense as a question?
It does.
Okay.
Yeah, I think, I think absolutely. I think that, um, uh, in the kind of civil design process, understanding the, you know, geotechnical aspects of the place where you're building is a super important part of the process. Uh, adding the layer of, okay, let's think about the age of the infrastructure underneath it and assume that it's not, you know, the stability of that, that, what's under the kind of structure underneath is, is not uniform. Um, I'm, I'm certain that that's something that, uh, that civil engineering firms are, are, are thinking about, but I don't know how much, uh, you know, recent developments, uh, exactly what they, uh, what design decisions they've made that are different because of that, because of that underlying infrastructure. So it's an interesting question to bring back to the, the capital team to see how they assess that. Uh, especially, especially, um, when providing permitting approval to different locations.
And I think those are questions I'd wanna bring back to staff as well, because I can ima- again, as an analyst, I can imagine developing something that looks more holistically at hotspots, right, that tries to bring together data on um, age of infrastructure, um, ownership, geotech, as you mentioned, um, but then also what, what technology is available in terms of leak detection or understanding, you know, um, three-one-one reports, like trying to bring all that together to have some proactive sort of hotspot identification. Um, I know that's similar, things have been done, um, in other places for other particular needs. Um, but I'd be curious to see what the staff has done already, um, on that front, specific to landslides, and actually would, would be, uh, something I wanna specifically follow up on.
Thank you. I believe that exhausts my questions. Uh, Councilwoman Schlossberger?
Thank you. Well, um, I am, I'm really glad you're both here today and, um, I'm glad that we got the questions that we did because you have gotten a preview of what we all grapple with on the board, you know, whether it's during an executive session prior to the board meetings, whether it's for special education, like special educational forums on certain topics, um, or various subcommittees. Essentially, what we talked about today is what we talk about and grapple with and try to solve for. And so um, I was taking some notes as well, because there are a couple of things I've been, um, uh, that I wanted to, to follow up on. Um, particularly this, this, this nexus between three-one-one, Public Works and Pittsburgh Water when it comes to, say, catch basins or where does a three-one-one go? So those are all fair points and actually had been meaning to set that up anyway, um, which we will. But, um, yeah, I think it's, you've, you've probably had the same observation I sort of picked up from your remarks that while the organizational, the internal operations and efficiency have just grown by leaps and bounds over the last ten years or so, certainly not perfect by any means, no utility is, can always strive to improve, and I wanna see it continue to improve in every possible way. The opportunity, Megan, in particular with your background with like operations and um, excellence is, internal, you know, internal operations and excellence is the opportunity to then take that outside of the entity and, um, you know, whether it's multi-governmental or intergovernmental agreements when it comes to utility coordination or whether it is, um, you know, stormwater or whether it's gray versus green or whether it's fin- creative financing, like, I, I do see that, you know, multiple other authorities or utilities all working together, um, in cooperation. I do see that as the next big opportunity here. We, you know, there are, there are, there is progress being made with, say, you know, co-ops with People's Gas, but it's like the first year it's happened and it's, it's not gone, it's not gone perfectly. So there needs to be some improvement there. Um, and, you know, also this, this whole idea that, um, for, for the last several years, being a regulated utility, there's not, there's an interesting dynamic of a publicly funded authority that is also a regulated utility under the P U C gives it less flexibility, like a tap-in fee issue is, is not gonna be a snap decision. It has to be then, you know, petitioned at the rate case, as, as a rate case issue, um, et cetera, et cetera. So, um, so, yeah, I really look forward to, you know, Megan, your, your expertise in that area to try to get a handle internally on eh, on improvements that can be made or, you know, seeing it from a different vantage point and being able to, to offer your, your thoughts there. And Jordan, obviously, with your vast experience and deep knowledge with, with, with Pittsburgh's, um, stormwater and water history in a lot of ways, um, um, I think, you know, I look forward to hopefully having you join our stormwater subcommittee, um, having that be a more robust part of, of the work that's done at Pittsburgh Water and, and on the board. And should you be confirmed, um, and, you know, ensuring that, as, as was mentioned, while there is a consent decree and so much money and so much focus on improvements of a hundred-year-old infrastructure that has to happen, we cannot forget stormwater. It has to be a part of, of what the authority continues to, to focus on and find creative financing for. So, I, I know you've, you've heard a lot, you've said a lot, you're welcome to respond. Um, but mostly, I just wanted to express my enthusiasm and, um, and hope to be working alongside of you as, as a board member really soon.
Yeah, and I'll just echo right back and say that, I mean, this, this is a really great opportunity, and I've been, as I noted, um, impressed by the, the strides forward that, um, that Pittsburgh Water has taken over the last ten years, having been, been through a lot of this. Um, and obviously, there are many steps to go. Um, I would likely be interested in the Stormwater Subcommittee, were we to be confirmed? So I will say that. Um, but yeah, I, I think, um, these are not easy questions, and I think what gives me comfort is to know that we are not the only city that is dealing with this. And having worked with many other cities on, on resilience plans, on stormwater plans, I can recognize um, that these are challenges shared across, um, a, a number of municipalities that have aging infrastructure that, um, are grappling with the new versus, um, uh, versus infrastructure design for past generations and, and past eras. Um, so, uh, I'm just excited to take on this, this work as well, what I'll leave with.
Same. And, uh, maybe one, one additional comment that I, because I haven't said it is, um, with any of these opportunities to improve, I think, um, I, I'll be sure to keep in mind, you know, if confirmed, eh, the, the, like, um, difficult and critical mission that Pittsburgh Water accomplishes every single day in providing clean water. I mean, it's a, it's a highly risky proposition to be a utility and, uh, putting so much, you know, the public puts so much uh, faith and so much trust in it. And I, I just wanna make sure that everyone knows, and, and I think it goes for Jordan, too, that I, I um, will keep that in mind every time I engage on this, um, how important it is uh, to, you know, make, make decisions thoughtfully and, um, with the public in mind, um, always.
Thank you. Thank you for your willingness to serve.
Thank you.
I'll say one more thing really quickly, and that was just, I'm so sorry. It was like a perfect wrap-up. I'm like, no, one more thing. But when you were talking about the, the idea of, you know, of, of a development writ large and using science and technology to determine that, along with the expertise, um, that we might be getting on the board and, and, and other staff members, uh, seems like a perfect nexus with our comprehensive plan at the city level. So wanted to say it out loud so it wasn't, again, just living in my head. And we could all maybe pursue that and follow up on that.
Sure, that makes sense.
Sure. That makes sense. Anything else? If not, having exhausted the business of this pre-agenter interview, this meeting is adjourned. Your appointments will come up for consideration next week.